Please read this evening's rules of order.
Good evening, I'm Matt Betzel, Regional Coordinator for the Office of Safety and Security. Thank you for attending tonight's Board of Education Business Meeting. In keeping with the business purpose of the meeting, I'd like to share some updated practices that will be enforced this evening and for all future board meetings. During the business meeting, all attendees are reminded to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Grandstanding, which includes applause, audible commentary, excessive gestures, standing ovations, and similar distracting behaviors is not permitted. Likewise, threatening words, gestures, or behaviors are not permitted. The rules of order require commenters to refrain from identifying individuals who are members of the public and do not sit on the board. Comments should be directed to the board, and it is not acceptable to address or identify members of the public by name. In the context of a board business meeting, the public includes school staff other than the superintendent. Additionally, disparaging comments, personal attacks, and inflammatory remarks about specific schools, personnel, any person or group are not permitted. We appreciate your understanding and are committed to ensuring a respectful and constructive dialogue in our meetings. Please feel free to reach out if you have any further questions, concerns, or need additional support. Should an attendee engage in one of the prohibited behaviors thus distracting from the business purpose of this meeting, the attendee will receive a warning to immediately cease the prohibited behavior. If the attendee does not cease the prohibited behavior, the attendee will be escorted from the business meeting by security. We appreciate your respectful attendance and participation and look forward to a productive meeting.
All right, thank you for showing up this evening, everyone. Before we start public comments, just a few quick comments because tonight is an unusual night, not only because we have a new board and leadership elections as well, but well before tonight's agenda was released, public comment was only for 30 minutes. And that is in part because there is an important closed session that the board and the staff must remain for, which will last at least 90 minutes or so this evening, starting at at least 8:30. Since there was so much interest in public comment this evening, I today, earlier today, said that I would make a public comment 45 minutes. As of right now, we have 55 public commenters, so we will be, and I've gotten the buy-in from the board on this as well, we will be limiting public comment this evening to one minute per person. Now, I will say, this is not the only opportunity or the only forum, nor is it the best forum to discuss issues with the board, because you speak to us under a clock, and we can't speak back to you. So what we will be doing, since it's cut short, and this is not the best forum, if you've ever been to a listening session, you know, there's a lot of times when we hold listening sessions where that is the best forum to discuss issues such as these. So we will be looking within the next week or two to put a dedicated information session and listening session on the calendar where we can have more time to discuss these issues outside of a board business meeting. In-person speakers will be called by the Board Secretary. All speakers will receive one minute to speak for individuals and groups. Ms. Rallo, please begin with in-person speakers.
This evening, we have Irma Guard Brown, followed by Anne Hartig, followed by Delaine Lewis.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, with only one minute, that means that whatever I plan to speak tonight is going to be cut terribly shorter. But I did want to speak as an individual, as a retired librarian, an advocate for the arts, a longtime community volunteer, and a member of St. John's Episcopal Church in Havre de Grace. In some circles, attending a liturgical church might raise some eyebrows as though I might not really be a Christian, just may I say, I am a believer in Jesus Christ. My faith came directly from the reading of the Bible over 45 years ago, so I'm a big fan. The reason I'm here is to oppose a proposal that I understand may be coming down the pike, in which the organization called the Life Wise Academy is planning to request that students be pulled from the classroom for off-campus Bible instruction during the school day. I do not believe that that is the best use of a student's time at this point.
Thank you. Also, if you see the additional mics up there, those are for the press.
Anne Hartig.
Hello, as a former Hartford County educator, I'm here to remind you to support the efforts and recommendations of certified school professionals. Education requires credentialed professionals to teach and care for children. To that end, the county's strategic plan stipulates it will employ a rigorous vetting process to hire and support highly effective staff to increase student achievement. Both MSDE and Hartford County Public Schools competencies and duties require librarians assess students' needs, curate a library, and provide reading material of varying interest. I urge you as board members to trust the certified school professionals, defer to their content management authority to curate school libraries, and finally, to respect and accept the established procedures and decisions derived from an informed, vigorous debate and content reevaluation. Rejecting both expert professionals and committee recommendations and banning a book based on uninformed arbitrary hearsay does not reflect a board of education who cares deeply about its learning partnership with the community's educational experts and students.
Thank you. You may also submit your comments in a written form to the board if you don't get through them in your one minute. Thank you for your understanding.
Hello, we're here today to object to a blatant misuse of power that violates federal and state laws and your own procedures, and ultimately, the inherent rights of students and parents. First, by holding a closed meeting in violation of open meeting requirements on a topic that is not specific to one individual, but an issue that impacts the entire school system. Secondly, by putting in place a process that, once it had concluded, you completely ignored. You ignored it in order to vote according to your own personal beliefs and not those defined by law and in the inherent power of a parent to decide for their own child. After developing a procedure that is in compliance with the Maryland State Freedom to Read Act, you chose to ignore it and violate it, putting us in the crosshairs of the state. What is particularly galling is that many of you came here on a parental rights platform, and yet you could not wait to violate those rights. When the system already allows for a parent to notify the school that their child is not allowed to read that book, that is a sufficient protection. We do not need you to parent our children. Reinstate the book, Flamer.
Next, we have Barbara Tingler, followed by Christina Linoka and William Martino.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of TWW and several additional members of our community to state our collective opposition to the Board of Education's unprecedented and unlawful banning of Mike Certo's graphic novel, Flamer. Since my time is being cut short, I want to make one point, because apparently, the people that made the decisions, ultimately overriding the Maryland Board of Education's policies and procedures, and were, because they were in violation, and went ahead and took additional steps, most people probably don't know that the most explicit description of homosexuality in that book was a simple kiss on the cheek from one person to another that was misunderstood and clarified immediately, and that is, seems to be, if people read the book...
Yes, we do need God back in our schools. Matthew 12:30, Jesus said, "He who is not with me is against me, and he who does not gather with me scatters." I commend you for your vote to remove Flamer from the libraries. Thank you to the board for the vote, and to President Pointon for your explicit explanation of the procedure and the decision made. I especially thank you for your acknowledgement that the book is in clear violation of HCPS's selection procedure, which quote, "prohibits materials with obscene language, excessively explicit content, or depictions of illegal or violent acts inappropriate for the age group served." Your reasoning suggests that many more books must be aggressively purged from our libraries. Flamer was definitely not the only book that was not age appropriate, and not the only book that certainly would have rated R as a movie. Your goal for us is to provide safe, secure, and healthy learning environments. The children deserve to keep their innocence and receive an excellent education, and we are counting on our board to give that to them. May God bless and guide you all in your decision-making.
Welcome to the new board members tonight. The material in some of the school libraries are adult-themed and are inappropriate for our children, especially under 17. With all of the wholesome books available, why is it that we choose books that are extremely filthy and inappropriate for kids? Choose ones that'll enhance education and not diminish it. Why do we want material that endorses foul language and sexuality? Ephesians tells us, quote, "Not to participate in the darkness, but to expose it." So I encourage the board to remove filthy material, replace it with wholesome material, enhance our education system, and stop destroying it. Thank you.
Next, we have Iris Bauer, followed by David Bauer and Kurt Doane.
Good evening, my name is Iris Bauer, and I'm going to comment on the recent actions of our Board of Education in banning Flamer. Let me make this very clear, I detest book banning. It is a way to underrepresent minorities and trample the rich and vibrant diversity in our world. It is a way to spread misinformation through careful selection of the knowledge available to people, often children, affecting their worldviews. Our Hartford County Board of Education banned Flamer directly against the committee's recommendation based on a few of the board members' personal opinions. Did any of you actually bother reading the book? That would allow you to create your own impressions instead of relying on the opinion of a parent who hadn't read it, who was saying a Fox News article, a biased source, and the article gives the impression of an article written by someone who either hadn't actually read the book, or had simply read the book to find out why it was banned, and explained that. It doesn't actually say much about Flamer, and many of the allegations are made are inaccurate.
Welcome to the two new board members. So, I will have to send email or wait for the next meeting for my prepared comment, which actually was not about the book topic. So I did read Flamer. I do wonder how many of the votes against it actually read through the book, because it is seriously less bad than I was expecting. When I was in middle school, I read Catch 22, 1984, and others like that, that I think of as actually being more adult, more mature in their themes. So, I would urge you all to reconsider this decision, especially since your makeup has changed slightly. Thank you all.
My name is Kurt, I'm the president of Upper Chesapeake Bay Pride. For many LGBTQIA+ students, Flamer is a lifeline, showing that they're not alone in their struggles with identity, bullying, and self-acceptance. This validation is critical for the mental health and sense of belonging. Last week, the federal government defunded the LGBTQIA+ suicide hotline option, removing a critical resource for vulnerable teens already at significantly higher risk for suicide. Flamer directly addresses themes of suicidal ideation, bullying, and finding hope. More than a story, Flamer is a tool for suicide prevention. At a time when national resources are being clawed away, this board, you all, should be exploring ways to bolster support for vulnerable kids, not taking it away. I want to thank the board members who voted to keep this book on the shelves. For those who didn't, if parents don't want their kids to read this book, there's an established process, and you know that. This isn't an attempt to protect students, it is an opportunity for you to stomp on the students.
Next, we have Megan Fitzgerald, followed by Jennifer Klein and James Ramsey.
Simply stated, it's about saving lives, okay? Banning this book, I keep coming back to playing out the worst-case scenario. What's the worst thing that can happen if a child reads this book? And then I play out the worst-case scenario for, you know, best friends of mine who almost killed themselves because they were members of the LGBTQIA+ community and did not have support from their family to be, to fully be themselves, and they were able to seek solace in finding literature that reflected who they were and helped them feel whole. So what kind of blood do you want to have on your hands? Reverse your decision.
My name is Jennifer Klein, I'm Aberdeen High School's librarian and an executive officer of Hartford County Association of School Librarians, which is the group I'm speaking on behalf of tonight, despite the outlandish restrictions on public comments. ACASL represents ACPS librarians and media technicians who, as I shared at the March 10th board meeting, are exceptionally educated and dedicated to developing excellent collections in our schools. It is these educators that vehemently oppose the board's closed-door decision to ban the first book in ACPS history. The next part of my speech is to outline some facts, because this decision was not made transparently. To sum it up, the high school librarian professional learning community met and vigorously reviewed the book, found it acceptable. The reconsideration committee, consisting of all of Hartford County community members, were trained by our own council and found the book acceptable. Came to you guys, we're not even sure if you read it, you found it unacceptable. We are asking for you to rescind this decision.
I recently got a peek at the reasoning for the board banning the graphic novel Flamer from our school libraries, and I found one of the bits suspicious, claimed that it is demeaning observations of females. As someone who has actually read the book, this is exactly like claiming that a work that depicts a male chauvinist negatively has demeaning, has demeaning observations of females, because said negatively depicted male chauvinist has dialogue that shows his true colors. If a student had made similar claims in their book report, a teacher would be well justified in giving them a low grade for sloppy analysis. And if someone both had called Flamer porn and claimed to have read the book, I would suspect the latter claimed to be a lie. The board should reverse this ban before it embarrasses itself further. Thank you.
Next, we have Cheryl Adams, followed by Andrew Bertoli and Donovan Boyle.
Good evening, your role is to foster an environment where students can develop critical thinking skills, engage with diverse principles and perspectives, and explore a wide range of ideas that prepares them for a complex world. Restricting access to books inhibits this growth. The book Flamer does address topics like race, gender, sexuality, and other important social issues. Having access to it offers students the opportunity to develop empathy and understanding for different life experiences, engage with difficult topics in a safe and educational setting, promoting dialogue and critical analysis, and it allows them to see themselves and their experiences reflected in literature, fostering a sense of belonging and validation. Removing books from school libraries solely because you disagree with the ideas contained violates students' First Amendment rights to receive information. I urge you to reconsider your decision and reinstate this book. Thank you.
As a former student of HCPS, there are various few issues I see with this. First of all, is the fact that the appeals process you have is closed-door. You have strenuous restrictions for the committee that you all put together, and they approved the book. The person that didn't read the book, appealed, gave it to the superintendent, who then forth approved the book. Then, all of you, with no process, no publicated form of objective or procedure, said no. That's not how it works. And I would also like to point out how, the fact that there is already a process for parents to independently block their own kids from reading whatever book they want, it does not need for a parent to impede another child that isn't theirs. And finally, the only opposition you're hearing is quotes of the Bible. We focus on the Constitution, not the Bible.
Good evening, board members, my name is Donovan Boyle, I'm representing the Hartford County Regional Association of Student Councils. Recently, the Board of Education overturned a ruling made by the reconsideration committee. The Board of Education overrode the decision of this committee and overlooked the voices of two students and multiple members of our community. This not only creates a precedent of allowing censorship, but also precedent of ignoring the voices of the people who matter most in the school system, the students. Controversial situations like these require compromise from both sides. We need to ensure the safety of each individual student while also satisfying the parent's vision for their children. It needs to be easier for parents to have access and information of what their children are reading and learning, while at the same time respecting the boundary of not censoring content to all students because they disagree with it. No matter what, it is important that we listen to the voices of the students. The board did not recognize the decision of students and other members of our community, and we urge them to take into consideration the lasting effects this decision will have on the community trust and acknowledgement of the student voice. Thank you.
Next, we have Bridget Crenshaw, followed by Jackie Johnson and Helen Mann.
Good evening, my name is Bridget Crenshaw, I am a media technician. I've worked for Hartford County Public Schools for, I'm beginning my 18th year, I'm beginning my 12th year in library services as a mediatec. The dialogue goes out that we are housing salacious, horribly raunchy, dirty books for kids. We're not. In North Hartford High School, for the last two years, our library statistics show that the top genre checked out is mystery and suspense. Behind mystery and suspense becomes science fiction and dystopia, behind that is romance, behind that is realistic fiction. So the community that says that we are forcing books with horrible content and bad language is just not true. Kids come through the library with their English classes, and they freely get to check out the books that they choose to read. No one is forcing them to take out a book. Please reinstate Flamer. I read it, it was a great book, I cried at the end. Thank you.
On June 27th, the US Supreme Court came to a decision that applies to all school systems. In the case of Mahmoud versus Taylor, the court ruled that children belong to the parents, not to the school system. Specifically, it stated that school systems such as Hartford County Public Schools are violating the rights of parents when they expose their children to LGBTQ books touting alternative sexual lifestyles without the parent's consent. The court said that the school system burdens the religious exercise of parents when it requires them to submit the children to instruction that poses a very real threat of undermining the religious beliefs and practices that parents wish to instill. The job of the public schools is to teach our students what they need to know to be literate, not to train up radicals to protest and find their voice. The students have a responsibility to stay focused, pay attention, obey the rules, so they can learn to become productive, law-abiding citizens capable of making well-informed life decisions.
Hi, my name is Helen Mann. I was disappointed to learn that Hartford County Public Schools has chosen to ban a book that had been approved by the agreed-upon vetting process. I did read this book. It was called Flamer, and I thought it was a poignant and hopeful book. I found nothing indecent about it. It's about, it's about, based on the lived experience of the author as a young man, and I'm really glad I got to read it. Even more concerning is that the book was rejected without going through the agreed-upon procedure for acquiring books in Hartford County. To me, this is a violation of trust that says agreements mean nothing and backdoor maneuvers are rewarded. It also shows a lack of respect for those citizens and professionals who acted in good faith to review the books. If we are to build a respectful and productive community, we need to agree upon the rules and follow them.
Next, we have Lisa Nickerson, followed by Judy Ramsey and Katie York.
Hi, thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. My son graduated from Hartford County Schools, he went to Prospect Mill, he went to Southampton, he went to Seumilton Wright, he went on to Franklin and Marshall College, and then went to Northern Arizona University and got a master's degree in applied physics. He's now a biomedical engineer. Congratulations. He got a great education here, and I was proud to have him go to school here. I supported the Board of Education, I supported the public school system. I have lost trust in you all. I am here tonight because I don't attend these meetings typically. I let you do your jobs. I am disappointed, I am embarrassed. Having Flamer taken away from the library is like taking catcher in the rye away, like taking the grapes of wrath away. Many of the things that our students are going to face in real life are difficult. They need to learn about that when they're in a protected environment so that they can be prepared to deal with those different things. I am not ready to have kids' lives on my hands. Please reinstate the book.
Katie York.
Good evening, my name is Katie York, and welcome to the members I have not gotten a chance to meet, congratulations. I had planned to come and speak on behalf of the Hartford County Public Schools Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, CCAC, because as of July 1, I am the chair of that committee. July is Disability Pride Month. This year marks the 35th anniversary of the signing of the landmark bill, the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, that was signed on July 26, 1990. Disability Pride honors those who went before us. It also celebrates our history and pushes back on ableism and concept that disability is shameful or bad. Disabled and disability are not bad words. The National Council of Self Advocates chose the theme of "We belong here, and we're here to stay." I would ask that you also reconsider your decision to remove Flamer from the library. Thank you.
Next, we have Jessica Yurkowicz, Christopher Providence, I'm sorry, these people are virtual, sorry about that. Tarcey Thompson, followed by Ellen Bersgan and Teresa Freely.
I'm happy to be here tonight and speak with you. I read the book Flamer, on the cover of it, it says, "This book will save lives." It speaks to the kids that need us most, and those kids are here. And I know some of you may not be comfortable with the fact that we have the kids who would need Flamer, but I'm glad we have them. It's a beautiful book, it's very touching. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Is there an Ellen? I'm not sure how to say the last name. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Ellen Buesken, former educator here, and I was very upset to learn that Hartford County had banned a book. I think that the decision should be up to the parents, and if the parents have been granted an opportunity to say, "I don't want my child to read this book," that should be fine for the parents or the guardians. And I think that the professionals should be trusted that are in your school system and the Maryland Curriculum Guide, that should be what you go by, and I'd like for you to reconsider your opposition to this book. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Freely, I'm vice president of all Hartford County Legal Women Voters, and I just wanted to read to you what the national says. "In 2024, the League of Women Voters United States actively opposed the rising trend of book bans across various states, citing concerns over infringements on individual liberties. The League stressed that restricting access to books, particularly those represented marginalized voices and critical viewpoints, posed a significant threat to the constitutional right of freedom of expression. While state leagues address these issues locally, the national offered guidance and resources to aid in their advocacy, ensuring that such efforts align with the League's resources to aid in their advocacy, ensuring that such efforts align with the League's position in individual liberties and the citizens' right to know. Also, I want to thank you very much for letting us go into the schools. We registered over 140 students this year.
Is there a Jessica Yurkowicz here? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were virtual. Okay, it's okay.
Hi, I'm Jessica. I'm a parent to a new middle schooler this year, sixth grade, and I grew up reading Anne Rice and Agatha Christie, if you know them. That's not really high school, middle school fare, and I expected my daughter to be on the same level. Unfortunately, we struggled with reading until fourth grade, when all the kids got into the series thanks to school libraries. We love our accounting library, but started at the school library, and I am very thankful for all the materials, don't care what it is, that they are available to have. She is not yet gay, nor is she male, nor is she black, but I want her to read about all those experiences because she's going to meet all of those people throughout her lifetime. I want her to hear about the becoming, because one day, she will also become. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Jessica Fendrick, followed by Leslie Thompson and Erica Bertoli.
I haven't started talking yet. Good evening, everyone. Speaking on behalf of the NAACP of Harford County, we did post this statement on our Facebook page, so I don't believe I'm going to have time to say it all, so I would encourage everybody to go and read it there. On June 26th, oh, one more thing. I wanted to thank the Board for strengthening the information at the beginning of the talk to make sure that people are protected during the public comments, so just thank you guys for addressing that. Okay, I'll do my best. On June 26th, the Harford County Public Schools Board of Education overrode the will of the, I'm just going to go with the last part. "The NAACP believes that people of color and LGBTQ individuals plus individuals deserve to see themselves reflected in books. The NAACP stands against book banning and supports the books that reflect one's personal lives and stories and the histories of others in and beyond their community." We'd like to request that you reinstate Flamer by Mike Carrato.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Thompson. I'm the proud mom of a soon-to-be fifth grader and ninth grader in Harford County Public Schools. There's a lot of tracks to follow on this book conversation. One being that established protocol was not followed, showing that our educators aren't being trusted with their decision-making. Two, parents who haven't read the book and are just wanting to force their ideologies, their beliefs on other people are making decisions for every parent in the district. That's the short version of those two. But most importantly, I think about my 14-year-old, who is an out bisexual male, and I'm sure there are some people in this room that makes them very uncomfortable, but the thought that there are children out there that don't have access to support like my son does absolutely breaks my heart. And taking this book out of the schools eliminates one more path for them to find someone that understands them. Thank you.
Good evening. You began by saying this isn't the best forum for this conversation. I would offer that when you ignore the established policies that you agreed to, we agreed to, and everybody took to be how we would proceed, when you ignored the superintendent agreeing with what the determination of that board was and decided to overturn everybody in secret, in silence, when else would you like us to speak? Now, as a parent of a current high school student and a graduate, I will say I am not interested in requiring any other child to read Flamer. I'm not trying to tell anybody else how to parent. I'm not certain where anybody is allowed to tell me where to parent. I don't know how it is not satisfactory for any parent to opt their child out. Why you need to opt my child out is a problem. Reconsider the ban. Thank you.
Next, we have Neil Thompson, followed by Carmella 50 and Maggie Connolly and Donna Connolly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Neil Thompson, and I'm at this meeting to state my opposition to banning the book Flamer. And I'm also here with a challenge for each Board member who voted on the June 26 hearing about this book. I challenge you tonight during Board comments to tell us how and why you voted the way you did. Please accept that challenge. Thank you.
I believe in the Constitution of the United States. I believe in the First Amendment. I believe in the separation of church and state. I do not believe that it's in the best interest of our students to pull people out, pull kids out, for religious education. Parents can do that at home. They can send their kids to classes on Saturdays in the evenings, like most of us did. I don't believe in banning books that have won all those awards and is so important to students nowadays. I looked, I didn't read the whole thing, but I glanced through it and read passages about every 20 pages. And kids have heard dirty words by that time in their lives, and they've been exposed to a lot. But the book is really a good book, and I don't know if every person on the Board is ready, but I think they should.
Thank you. Sorry.
I am Maggie Connelly, and I go to Haverhill Elementary School, and I do not think it is right to ban books, because some parents, they might not want their children to read that book, or they might, or they might want them to read that book. But it doesn't matter, like, those kids, if you're at the library and they are by themselves, I feel like they are the, I think they control themselves, and they should be the ones who pick their own books and not their parents.
I'm Donna Connelly. I'm her grandmother. I also oppose banning any books. We are a family of readers, and I've always allowed my kids to read whatever they liked. We are, you know, Catholics. They went to CCD. I agree. I don't believe likewise should be in the schools. We educated our children, and we gave them their religious education privately. That's our job. Thank you.
Next, we have Jan Hirschfeld, followed by Lucy Buxton and Fred Durst.
Hi, thank you for hearing us out. I want to ask the Board to reconsider your opinions about this book. I've read the book, and I, the state of Maryland has said that we all have the right to read, and our Board in Harford County is contradicting that. I want you to please consider, and you've heard, you have heard many opinions about this, please consider what this attitude can do to our children. It can be, letting an ideology sway your opinion can actually harm our children. Please think about the children.
Hey, I'm Lucy Buxton. I'm a former teacher in Harford County and also in Howard County. I'm here to oppose the banning of Flamer and of any book. In fact, I think that it is incumbent upon the Board to respect and listen to the educational professionals that examined this book and made the decision that it was a book that would be appropriate for our children. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me thank you so much for what you do. It's a sacrifice, and you're doing it for the public good. I want to start off by thanking you. I'm a proud product of Harford County. Dr. Riberti was a friend of mine, went to school with his kids. My son went to school under Dr. Riberti, and he would say, "Why are you doing this? Why are you banning this book? Is this important? Ladies and gentlemen, this is easy to fix. Put the book back, please."
Next, we have Bari Klein, followed by Pam Demmer and Tracy Pappenchak.
Good evening. There's been a lot of wonderful statements, so just in the interest of time, I just want to go on the record for saying that I'm in opposition of the Board of Education banning a book that subject matter experts approve by the Harford County Public Schools have approved.
Good evening. In the interest of time, I'm just going to say I oppose your banning of this book for all the reasons that have been stated before me. Just doesn't make sense. Please fix this.
Tracy Pappenchak, I am a school librarian. I am against the decision to ban Flamer. This is another example of the precedence you set of ignoring professionals. You show you don't care about the professionalism of librarians, and you invalidated the hard work of the reconsideration committee members. I am a librarian that served on the committee that created the policy, and the whole time, we took care at every level to make sure that the book was read in its entirety in order for an informed discussion, free from political impartiality. You did not do that. Not to mention, you didn't consult the very professionals, we librarians, on this matter. If you had, you would have known that we already conducted a professional book review, which is spelled out in the procedure you approved, and came to the consensus to offer it to high school students only, based on our own study of the content, the reviews, and the age range recommendations. Had you actually consulted us, that would have made your pathetic excuse for taking a book on this invalid. Please reinstate the book.
Next, we have Linda Bryan, followed by Peter Jeffrey and Mary Santangelo. I'm so sorry.
Hi, I'm Linda Bryan. I've had two daughters that have graduated from Baylor High School. I now have a grandson in the public school system at Patterson Mill, a ring factory. I'm really embarrassed, and I'll echo the words that were said earlier, very disappointed in this decision. It sounds like the process was not followed. I would like you to reinstate the book. I'm going to read a quote that someone handed me that seems apropos for this night. "Children need books that are mirrors that allow them to see themselves and their own, and their experiences. Windows that they can look through and see other worlds, sliding glass doors that allow them to walk through in imagination to other worlds." That's Rudine Sims Bishop in 1990. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Pete Gottfried, and I wanted to express my disappointment. I oppose book banning. Huge fan of open-mindedness. Please reinstate this. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Mari Santangelo. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have moved here recently, about five years ago. This is my first time attending this meeting. I moved to Harford County specifically because we liked the diversity. My husband kept trying to get me to consider Cecil County, however, as early as 2013, they had a KKK organization, and I do not like hate groups. And I find it very upsetting that here we have a federal hate group that has come in and made an impact and has caused us to lose this book and how many more. This is just the beginning. And you have not taken your own policy, your own process. You stopped, you just went and rode over top of it? It just, you know, if you make a process, you need to follow it. If there's a law, you need to follow it. And I'm very, very concerned that we're going to lose that. So I would really like you to reconsider banning this book. Thank you.
Next, we have Rebecca Romo Man, Barbara Pencil, and Beth Hapik.
This is the last place I'd like to be, but being a reading teacher at North Harford Middle School, I felt I had to be here. Banning books is a dangerous precedent. Books should be our safe place. Books should be where we can safely explore situations, feelings, relationships, wars, hardships, financial ruin, fill in the blank, all of the comfort of our, all from the comfort of our living rooms. Books allow us to see ourselves in a book. That is self-awareness. Books allow us to see what someone across the cafeteria might be experiencing. That's empathy. Books allow us to explore what might have been or what might be. If I truly thought that reading books could indoctrinate children, I would be grabbing every copy of every book that showed characters bringing a pencil to class. Please reverse your decision, and please do better.
I'm very much opposed to this ban. I think that our children deserve better. I would really like you to reconsider.
Good evening. I'm Beth Hapik. I have four graduates, graduates of HCPS, grandkids now in the system. I just implore you, if you have any concern for every child in the system, even those you don't understand, please reconsider banning the book.
I have Delka Schrock, Serena Schrock, and Debbie Stathis.
Hello, my name is Doug Schrock, and I'm an Army veteran, and I did take an oath to the Constitution. My daughter was a graduate from Baylor High School, and I do want to thank you because she's studying at Towson for forensic chemistry. Now, I'm just going to say a few words, and it's individuals have diverse life experiences. Just because you might not share or approve and experience doesn't mean it doesn't have value. Books detail diverse experiences and that people, that people face or relate to or can relate to. They do have value. Do not shout "diverse voices" by banning books.
Good evening. I'm Serena Schrock. She's my mother. I was a, I'm a graduate of the Harford County Public School System, and I'm an avid reader. I oppose banning books, any book in general. We deserve to have the freedom to be able to read whatever we want, you know, and understand experiences of others, because experiences are important, and it gives you empathy and understanding of other people, and we deserve to be able to understand other people. I vehemently oppose the banning of this book, and I hope you reconsider.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a retired English teacher, high school English teacher, 40 years, and I encourage you to reverse your decision and trust the professionalism of those who chose the book. Students need to be challenged to think critically by the professional educators. The banning of this one book can lead to the banning of other books. It's a slippery slope leading to ignorance. Students need to be challenged. Please reconsider.
Next, we have Julie Bennebeck Dryben, followed by Jennifer Rolston and Reverend Stephen Hofmeister.
Hello. I just want to let you know I disagree with the Board of Education's decision-
Hello. I just want to let you know, I disagree with the Board of Education's decision to remove this book, Flamer, from the collection, and I would like you to reinstate it.
Sarah Jennifer Ralston.
Thank you very much. So many of the comments that have already preceded me are things I would have said. But I want to comment on the process. I was a member of the HCPS Committee to reconsider Flamer. It was the first time the committee was convened, and I want to commend the school system for the thorough training they gave us. We talked legal issues. We had all kinds of slide presentations of other court cases. We really, really had a good understanding of what we were dealing with. And the committee worked so hard, and we were so proud to take on this work on behalf of the students in the community. And our support of the book was unanimous. And then to have this happen, it's very disillusioning. It's disillusioning for people who want to come out of the committee and work together to help the schools. And please reverse the decision to ban the book.
Good evening, Board. Welcome new Board members. I'm Pastor Steve Hoffmeister, and I am the chairman of the LifeWise Academy Steering Committee for Hartford County. I just wanted to say welcome, introduce myself, comment that the LifeWise Academy program is a parental option program. You don't want your kid to participate if Hartford County acknowledges it? Don't sign the permission slip. Also, I'm open to anybody, be public or this board, who would like to discuss the pros, cons, and merits of this program. Have a good evening.
Next, to How Jean Salvatore, Amanda Lazo, and Jennifer Forsythe.
Good evening. I have not read the book Flamer, but you better believe I'm going to now. I will probably buy it because it won't be available in the libraries or the bookstores locally, because that's what happens when you ban a book. This is a very bad decision. I am urging the Board of Ed to not ban any more books and to reinstate this one. Please, listen to the professionals who are giving you their best opinion.
I would like to ask you to reconsider your decision. You had a process. The process was followed. You had the recommendations of the experts. You failed to follow that. The history says banning books, you're never on the right side of history when you're banning books. So you need to reverse this decision.
Good afternoon. I'm a parent, and I'm a very strong believer in teachers. No one up here has yet said how strong of a believer in teachers. I believe in teachers. I am a very strong believer in librarians. Librarians are amazing, all right? I trust our professionals, all right? They have worked hard to earn their credentials, to earn a master's degree. These professors are highly in tune with educational policy, and they've respected the process. They've done what we've all, as a collective society, asked them to do. What historical example for book banning turns out well? None. Although living is scary, when we continue to suffer, I would do it all over again to be able to write this book for you. To hope, to dream, to want love, these are dangerous acts. Fear and hope are bound up together inside of us alongside our flaws and our divinity. In this darkness, we can find an inner light to guide us, and there is light in you, even if you can't see it.
President Pointon, that is all the in-person speakers this evening?
Okay, Ms. Slater, are there virtual speakers?
It's actually Mr. Kyle Anderson.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Pointon. We do have one individual who is speaking virtually this evening. Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. Before you begin your public comment, please state your name first and last. Your time will conclude in one minute. You will hear a bell ring when you have 15 seconds remain. Please introduce yourself, and you begin your public comment now.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Providence. I'm speaking in opposition to the Board's decision to ban the book Flamer. According to one source, 40% of LGBTQ-plus youth seriously considered suicide in the last year. 12% of them attempted suicide in the last year. Research shows that students in LGBTQ-plus-affirming schools report lower rates of bullying, harassment, and suicide attempts. I've read Flamer twice. It's moving, powerful, realistic, and relatable. If this book might inspire just one young person not to kill themselves, that should be reason alone not to ban it. Respect the recommendations of the reconsideration committee and the superintendent. Rescind the ban on Flamer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pointon. That is all we have for virtual this evening.
All right. Thank you for your public comments this evening. We're going to move on to Board member comments. Typically, we'll start at one end of the dais and then move over, but with two new Board members, we're going to do something a little bit different tonight. We're going to start with the two new Board members, so I'd like to start with Trey McVicker.
Thank you, President Pointon. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Bolson, even though you're not here, staff, and members of the community. My name is James McVicker, but many call me Trey, and I'm honored to serve as the student member of the Board this year for HCPS, for Hartford County Public Schools. I'm a proud student at Hartford Technical High School, where I studied the cybersecurity program, and have spent the past few years deeply engaged in student leadership through the Hartford County Regional Association of Student Councils. I had the privilege of recently serving as the Chief of Staff and then as President of HCRSC. During my time, I helped rebuild the organization from the ground up, restructuring our leadership, reenergizing our student voice, and ensuring that HCRSC better reflected and represented the diverse voices of students around our county. I have previously served two terms as the Technical Operations Coordinator for the Maryland Association of Student Councils, and am now the Director of Operations. Now, as SMAB, I'm excited to take that same energy and vision to my new role. My mission this year is to advocate boldly and to work collaboratively to elevate student needs across our school system. Some of my priorities for this term include expanding student voice by laying the groundwork for countywide SMAB elections, giving all students the opportunity to choose their representative, protecting academic opportunity by advocating for the continued funding of programs like Career and Technology Education, Career and College and Career Readiness, Advanced Placement Classes, and Dual Enrollment, making equity in the arts a priority by pushing for advanced art and music courses to be weighted on a 5.0 scale, just like any other advanced class, restoring opportunity by advocating to bring back the junior year waiver and dual enrollment associated waiver for eligible students, and finally, empowering students for life after graduation by making a financial literacy course a graduation requirement for all students, obviously per the approval of the Board. I'm truly excited to represent over 38,000 students across our county, and I look forward to listening, learning, and most importantly, leading on behalf of our students. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Corn?
Yes, well, this is an interesting first day on the Board of Education. I didn't read the book, and I had nothing to do with the decision to remove it from the schools. I am a lawyer by trade, and I hear, I hear a lot of people from the right, the left, and, and I'm really excited to hear all of you exercise your First Amendment rights. Your First Amendment rights are extremely important. And, you know, there was a time in America when we lived in a world of segregation. White people were separated from black people. They went to different schools, and that was the law of the land. And people believed deeply that that was right. There was, there was a historical precedent. They believed that was absolutely the way it should be. And it took the Supreme Court to remind us in Brown versus Board of Education that separate is not equal. And I would challenge anyone in this room, whatever their political affiliation is, whether they're right, the left, I would challenge any of, any person in this room to say that that was a correct way to educate our children. It certainly wasn't. But there were people who believed that that was the case. I see people shaking their head, no, I'm scared, I'm scared that maybe some people feel that that was, in fact, the way. But it's not. It's not the way we treat our children. It's not the way we treat, we treat people. But we have a Supreme Court case that, that, that in Brown versus Board of Education told people that the Equal Protection Clause is, it means that separate is not equal. And now we have a new Supreme Court case that also tells people that the same right that allows you to speak here freely, your mind, also tells people they have religious liberty. And we're not talking about adults. We're talking about children. And I would encourage everyone to actually think that, think about the rights of other people in the same way that the court is thinking about the rights of individuals. And maybe, maybe, if you're infringing on someone else's rights, you might want to consider the fact that the Supreme Court is reminding you that it's not your right to infringe and push, push your ideals on other people. So, again, I'm encouraged that everybody's speaking up freely. I welcome the comments. I think it's fantastic. It certainly challenges me to think, and I will take every one of your comments into any decision that I make on this board. Thanks for the time to speak.
Thank you. We'll start down with Ms. Alvarez and move across the dais. Ms. Alvarez?
I just want to welcome the new members to the Board, our new student member of the Board, Mr. McVicker. He's certainly showed his leadership skills and, and past activities that have been involved with him, and I'm sure he's going to bring those same assets to the Board this year. So, you know, welcome. And also to Mr. Mark Corn's, welcome to the Board. Hopefully, you know, you can feel like you can come to me or any of the other Board members for support throughout this, this year, and, you know, hope that you have a good transition. There's a lot to learn, and, you know, we're here to help and assist you in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bruce?
Yes, good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say to those who asked how we voted, how I voted, I abstained from the vote because I supported the school board, but I also did not read the book. So I did not feel that I was equipped to really provide any information for those members of the Board who apparently who had read the book and had given their opinions. I would be open to any reconsideration, but before I would do that, I would want to read the book for myself. So I would be able to vote in a more intelligent way. But I do believe that the other thing that really convicted me was the fact that I support the staff and the professionals. I support all that they do. When the vote came up, it was obvious that even if I had voted no, we were not going to succeed. So I would ask the President to, to look at this issue with so many people giving us concerns, and I plan to read the book. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and we're off to a new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mueller?
So, this all began as an appeal hearing. Someone appealed the book. They didn't want, they wanted the book removed from the school library. It went through the reconsideration committee. The reconsideration committee limited the age to being a high school age book, so it would be removed from middle schools, but they weren't removing it from the system. That parent who first challenged the book brought it up on appeal, and the appeal went to the superintendent. The superintendent upheld the decision of the committee. Now, this committee, if any of you remember, was a long, drawn-out process to get this procedure, and then a long process to choose the people to be on the committee and for them to be trained. So this isn't something that happened lightly or quickly. Then, when the superintendent upheld the decision of the reconsideration committee, it was appealed to the Board of Ed. And at the Board of Ed appeal, a lot of people admitted they hadn't read the book. I have not read the book, but I did not vote to ban it. First off, I just intrinsically do not believe in banning books, so I'll start there. But on top of that, I don't know how people did vote to ban a book that they didn't read when everybody who did read it and the reconsideration committee and the professionals wanted to keep it. So I have a lot of problems with that. Because this was an appeal hearing, I don't know how you redo it, how you reconsider it, how you, I mean, unless that parent appealed it again to have the decision changed, I don't know what we would even do with that. So I will look at Mr. Pointon, who obviously, or Dr. Pointon, excuse me, I wasn't trying to say that wrong, that he must know how to take care of this, but I would definitely support any changes being made in this direction.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here. It's my understanding that there's a process in effect, there's a committee, and they made a decision. So now, it appears that somehow or another, people don't like that decision anymore. So when we're dealing with students, you know, who are, I'll say gay, or even ones that are straight, it's still difficult for them to, I would, I would say to, for this particular book, the Flamer. But to me, that's, should be a prop, that should be a situation that has the parent involved and everyone, and their surrounding family, and let them determine what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
I'm just going to keep my, my comments to a minimum this evening, but I did vote to remove the book, and I stand by that decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sewell?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Really appreciate your time, you know, taking away a piece of your evening this week to, to share your thoughts with us. It's extremely important. I wanted to welcome the new members of the Board, Mr. Corn and Mr. McVicker, and also recognize our president for being reelected, and Ms. Page for your, your election to Vice President. So it's clear that we have some work to do here as a board. I'd like to challenge this board and our leadership that when we have anything that we're working on, particularly things that are very controversial and that we have very divided views, that a simple 5-4 vote does not do it. Now technically, when there's a 5-4 or a 5-3-1 in this case, there was a decision made. But that's not good enough. I don't think that's good enough. When we can only get to 5-4, that means that we have not worked hard enough. We have not taken into consideration everyone's viewpoints, and we haven't figured out a path forward that includes everyone. So I would like to challenge this board that when we have difficult things, that we try to get to at least a supermajority. So we haven't, we haven't done our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. It is a privilege to be reappointed to the Board of Education. Thank you for the county for continuing to place your trust in me. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our new Board members as you join us for your first meeting. I look forward to working together. Thank you for stepping up to lead. As I continue in this role, I do so grounded in advocacy for strong academic standards, fiscal responsibility, and the foundational role that parents play in their education. I believe parents are not just stakeholders, they are partners. Their voice, their values, their choices matter deeply in shaping how we educate the next generation. I remain committed to ensuring that our teachers and staff are respected as professionals and supported with the tools they need to succeed. Teachers are the heart of the classroom and show up every day to inspire, challenge, and support our students. We must ensure they have the resources, respect, and encouragement they need to thrive and feel truly valued. Their well-being directly impacts the learning environment, and when we invest in them, we invest in better outcomes for our students. I will continue to be a strong voice for policies that uplift and protect those that I will continue to be a strong voice for policies that uplift and protect those that serve in our schools. Lastly, I want to address what most of you came here tonight to talk about, and that's this reconsideration process and the removal of the book Flamer. About two years ago, when I first joined the board, Dr. Bolson requested that a work group be put together to start mapping out a specific process for books to be reviewed. I think it's important to note that this is a procedure, not a policy. This board did not vote on this process. This is strictly an operations side of the House book review consideration. Appealing the decision of the committee to the BOE is part of the process, so the process was followed. I understand that the concerns that the public has about the vote not being open, this was our first time, appeals are closed meetings, perhaps for future book appeals, we look to make it open. It's something that we can work on. Please know that I take the decision to remove a book very seriously. I read every sentence of this book. I approached it with an open mind. I'm discouraged to hear that some of the members of this board did not read this book before coming to a vote. My vote to remove the book is not a reflection on the author, the subject, the literary merit of the book. It's centered around the repeated use of the F-word, excessive vulgar language, disrespectful comments about priests, and I will consider derogatory comments about women. The overwhelming and offensive and crude language and graphic sexual nature is inappropriate for students. We don't give students in our schools unrestricted access to rated R movies. If this book was a movie, it would be rated R. When schools provide books filled with repeated profanity, sexual references, and harmful slurs, we send mixed messages to our students about what's acceptable in real life. Ensuring age-appropriate content in schools isn't about censorship. It's about safeguarding innocence while preserving the right context for learning. It's not about silencing voices, but it's honoring our role as stewards of a safe and respectful learning environment. And Mr. Sewell, I appreciate your comments. I think that there's work that this board can do. I would like to see us collectively come together with a policy on what's appropriate for our students in the school system. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, board members. I don't have anything prepared. I just want to say it's a, I'm really looking forward to working with the new board and the new board members. If we could quiet down, please, as we wrap up. I just wanted to say I agree with many of Ms. Page's comments, and out of, not to be redundant, I posted, there were a lot of things that I heard, both in person and on Facebook world about this, and I would say more than half of them were probably wrong or uninformed. So I attempted this morning to put a Facebook post up, which clarified much of this, which Ms. Page touched on as well. I do agree that we need to look at the process that was considered, which, again, was not a board thing, and I think that there's some major flaws in it. You know, for example, the board was given sort of a binary option to remove it or keep it, and didn't have any flexibility on making it only accessible to those students where it was age-appropriate. Additionally, I think the process took way too long. I think it took, what, six months or nine months or something from beginning to end, and I think that we need to be a little bit more timely with the concerns that come to the board. Lastly, I'll say one comment on the transparency piece, and that is, to protect the privacy of a petitioner, all appeals to the board, according to standard and current ethics and law, are considered confidential. But again, we'll look at ways to be more transparent with the decisions that the board makes in the future. So again, I will direct you to my Facebook page there for more information. So we're going to move on. We'll start with old business, and we have no old business this evening. We're going to move to item C consent agenda. If you could please read the consent agenda, Ms. Page?
Sure. Contract award, usage for technology-related products. Contract award, annual maintenance support for wireless components. Contract award, outside legal counsel. Contract award, stormwater and drainage improvements of Jopatown High School. Minutes of previous board meetings, June 16, 2025, and June 23, 2025.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Diane, so moved.
There, second?
Carol Bruce, second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Please say no. Thank you. The motion passes. I'll accept the motion in a second to waive the 10-minute break.
Mrs. Lawrence, so moved.
There, a second?
This is Diana, a second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Do you need the break?
Five minutes, yes.
Okay. Disregard. Yeah, that's fine. Let's move to a five-minute break then. Thank you. Welcome back. We're going to move on to item D, presentation of proposed revisions on board policy 20-0002. School calendar, I'd like to welcome Ms. Katie Ridgway, our chief of staff. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Dr. Pointon just said, my name is Katie Ridgway. I'm the chief of staff for HCPS, and tonight I come before you with a proposed change to the school calendar policy. It is a, there's a couple of simple changes that would require to go out for 30 days public comment, so there's no vote this evening. This is to get everything started. The main changes of the policy are to reduce the number of inclement weather days from six to three. In the current board policy, it requires that we have six inclement weather days embedded in our calendar, and that is not a typical practice throughout the state, and this is going to put it down to three inclement weather days as embedded into the calendar. As such, it has a couple other provisions that if there are extenuating circumstances, the board with a supermajority vote could change a calendar that has been previously approved by the board. Right now, the language of that doesn't use the words "extenuating circumstances," and Dr. Pointon and I discussed just prior to this meeting, that for the policy that goes out for the 30-day public comment, it will say "extenuating circumstances," and it does require a supermajority vote. That is just to make sure that there is no perception that this is for the board to make a unilateral decision that has nothing to do with a specific need that is in the best interest of the school system, which could be a change in state policy or in election schedule change or something to that effect. And it has provisions therein. So the, both the previous policy and the changes to the policy are available on the board agenda, and we are asking for the board to approve this to go out for the 30-day public comment with those two additional words that says that the calendar change can only happen in extenuating circumstances.
All right. Thank you. Just so, just for a little bit of context, so this is in part also because the state sort of has changed their laws last year allowing synchronous days, which the board...
If we want to consider using, so it doesn't, by changing the policy, it doesn't say that we're going to use synchronous or asynchronous days or anything to that regard for inclement weather, but it does give the board the option to use those, so without having to exhaust six days in order to do that.
Okay. Okay, and I like the supermajority piece, which is what Mr. Sewell was talking about there, to be used in extenuating circumstances. So for example, if we miss something, or if there was a state law change, or state of emergency, or something like that, you could make changes potentially after either the policy or statutory cutoff date to pass the original calendar. So, okay, so no voting action this evening, just any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to a closed session, so I'll just say there's no superintendent's report this evening. We look forward to seeing the superintendent back next month. Eric, do you have anything to say before we wrap up?
No, just congratulations again to our four board members that we swore in earlier, and obviously to our officers, and thank you.
Thank you. The next board meeting will be on Monday, August 18, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned. All right. Good evening. I call to order this open session on Monday, July 21, 2025. At this time, I ask that everyone please mute your device until called upon. Ms. Rallo, please take a roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mrs. Hahn?
President, I mean, present. Sorry, I'm reading.
Mr. Corn?
Present.
Mr. McVicker? Mr. McVicker is absent this evening. Dr. Mueller?
Present.
Mrs. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sewell?
I'm also president.
Vice President Page?
Here.
President Pointon?
Here.
This completes the roll call.
Thank you. The board is now in open session. The purpose of the open session is for the board to consider action regarding a potential closed session. Before the board considers this action, it needs to decide whether to permit public comment. The chair will entertain a motion to waive public comment in its entirety in light of the limited nature of the open session. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Carol Bruce, so moved.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
If there are any opposed, please say no. Thank you. This actually, in a second. Yeah, that is correct. Potential closed session is before the board to consider. The basis for the closed session is to preserve the privacy and confidentiality of information regarding the superintendent's performance, and to obtain a legal update on sensitive personnel matters, and to maintain confidentiality of potential parameters, if any, of negotiation with bargaining units and discussions related thereto pursuant to section 3-305B129 of the general provisions article of the Maryland Code. The chair will now entertain a motion to close the session.
This is Diane. I move to close the session.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
If there are any opposed, please say no. Thank you. The motion passes. Now moving on to closed session.